For September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll start with our first agenda item, uh, acceptance and or approval of the minutes from August twenty eight. I'm sorry, August eighteenth of twenty twenty-five's work session. All of those, uh, notes should have been sent to you via email from town, uh, Clark and Treasure Mangus. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right, all in favor? By saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move. Okay. Uh, second item. This is an item that I'm happy to do tonight. It's the approval or the nomination for the Ethics Committee, uh, Commission members. Those folks are people that I asked to step up and participate in ta- in the town. Uh, one of the town functions, one that we hope we never have to use. We have three, uh, worthy candidates tonight and I'm asking the council for their approval. I'll give you a brief inter- introduction, uh, of the three. Austin Fogarty is a person that I've, uh, known for several years. Uh, Austin is a resident of the town for more than twelve years. He's a, uh, he and his family live in Atlee Ridge. He, Austin has been active in the community. He supports the town, uh, town events. And he's a active participant as a far- in the form of a can- candidacy in town government. Also on my list of, uh, candidates, I have Nicole Ballard. Uh, I've known Nicole for probably more than twenty years, probably closer to twenty-five years. Uh, Nicole and her family live in a Blue Ridge Manor and have done so for
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. My goodness, time flies. Uh, she and her family have also been active in town, in the, in town, uh, activities. I believe your family played in the rec council, um, both in lacrosse and basketball. And your husband Bob has been a coach, so. And soccer? Alright, awesome. And really appreciative of that. Last candidate is a gentleman that I've known for a long time. Our girls have been friends since probably elemen- uh, elementary or maybe even kindergarten, maybe? So they've been our residents, uh, for certainly more than twenty-five years or close to twenty-five years. Twenty-seven years, so that is certainly more than twenty-five. Matt Abbott, uh, coached, uh, basketball in West Carroll Rec Council. Um, has been a supporter of town events for over the year, uh, for over the many years that he's been here. I'm gonna give, uh, the candidates a chance to introduce themselves so that you can become a little more familiar with them. We'll start with, um, Mrs. Ballard.
So, uh, essentially Nicole Ballard lived here. I mean, I can't remember exactly.
Well, we've lived here twenty-three, but you lived here.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I did grow up in Windsor. So, my whole life, since I was six. Two daughters, uh, one's twenty-seven. She, uh, is a law clerk right now. Uh, was going to go for next adult job. So, uh, good luck there. And Keely is my younger one. She's twenty and she's majoring in criminal justice at York. Both girls play lacrosse and basketball. Pretty sure it was the lady that plays soccer, or maybe one of the boys. We had four additional children live with us for a while, our nieces and nephew. So it's kind of a part of it all, kind of goes together. For a while there, we had several people, uh, living there. I own my own business with my sister and we are, uh, like an event managing company. Like doing websites and things like that, registration for events, um, conferences and whatnot. And I've been really with the company for about thirty years, or thirty-eight, seven, thirty-five years. And then bought it in two thousand and eighteen, so. And yes, we're on Bello Road with the two big Great Gains that we work at you every time you may just walk by. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Austin?
Anyways, my name's Austin Fogarty. Uh, as the mayor Kevin Corning said, I lived in Joe After. I moved there in May of two thousand and thirteen. So I've been there a little, I guess a little over twelve years now. Uh, really enjoy it. I have, uh, two kids. My son Landon is twelve, my daughter Ella's eleven. Uh, my son enjoys playing football, baseball, soccer, basketball. And my daughter likes to chill more. She did cheer and dance. Uh, my wife is a very skilled nurse at Carroll Hospital. Um, and she's been working there for a few years now, uh, which really fits my schedule. I've been a police officer, uh, for almost going on fifteen years now. Um, actually motors, uh, which means I ride a Harley and I drive a cruiser. And I get to say hi to a lot of people and I'm usually one of the nicest, uh, officers you'll probably meet out there, I think, at least for me. I don't write a lot of tickets. Only when it's necessary do I write tickets, because I kind of remember where I come from. Um, and I think it's good to, to meet everyone in different walks of life. Kind of everyone's fighting around demons inside you don't know anything about, so if you can just be a, kind of a lighter, a a good person, a kind person to other people that you don't know, it goes a long way. So I'm very excited to be a part of this and I really appreciate that opportunity. Like, uh, you guys said, I hope we never have to be used, I guess.
That's alright.
Hopefully we can teamwork and make the best decisions.
Austin and his wife are some of the best parents we have.
Well, thank you, Austin. And last but not least, Matt Abbott.
First of all, thank you, Mayor, for approaching me. First of all, my wife and eldest daughter in the back for moral support. I need to block the door so I can't escape. I'm Matt Abbott. I, um, also live in, um, the Atlee Ridge development. I was in the low end of Joe After. I couldn't afford We, uh, have, as I said, we've lived here since January of ninety-eight when we moved in. As Kevin said, my daughter's played a lot of athletics too. My wife is a registrar at Northwest Middle School in Toneytown, so.
Best ever.
There'll be something else for you. I am a employee with the mayor of St. Paul's Police and a friend of mine of the city. Last week was my forty, uh, my fortieth year, so I'm on my forty-fourth year. Again, thank you, Kevin.
Well, thank you all for taking a minute to introduce yourselves. You know, I know it's not easy when, you know, to do this. I, I, I know that, uh, you know, a lot of times people care, but it's, it's tough. It's a tough job to kind of step forward and say, you'll, you'll participate in, uh, in, in government. It's, uh, certainly an important part of the, uh, our, our functioning here, but we never, hopefully we never have to utilize your, your efforts on this, so. Anyway, um, I'll ask the council right now, um, if you all would accept my recommendations or, uh, for these three candidates. I, I certainly believe that they're, um, all upstanding and, um, reputable people. I think their values and, um, their values are consistent with what we would have on the Ethics Commission. That's certainly why I asked, uh, them to participate. So, um, I'm asking, I guess if you all would make a, I'll make the motion, or I guess someone would make the motion other than me.
So I'll be happy to make the motion to accept the nominations for Mr. Abbott, uh, Mr. Fogarty and Ms. Ballard.
Okay, so we have a first, uh, a motion to accept my candidates and, uh, our candidates. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Wonderful. So we have a first and a second. I guess by rule, I have to say, uh, all in favor, but I hope you all are. So all in favor? Please state by, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Alright. Okay.
And I'm gonna second that. I hope we never, ever need to use any of you for, for an ethics violation, so.
I don't suspect that the meeting will be that long, so we can take care of the paperwork afterward if you don't, if you all don't mind. Okay.
You're gonna do the bow, the, the thing at the end? Are we gonna do that now?
I'm still brushing off the
The new guy stuff.
The new guy stuff, so actually, we're gonna do the oath right now.
I'll take a picture.
Yeah. So here's the way I'll do it. I'll read it and, uh, if you all would stand and Alright, so the way I'll do it is, um, we'll just, I'll point to you, you say your name after I say aye, okay? Alright. Aye.
Nicole Ballard.
Austin Fogarty.
Matthew Rabbit.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Ethics Commission member for the town of New Windsor according to the Constitution and laws of the state. I do.
I do.
Thank you. You've sworn in.
While everybody's standing, of you with the mayor. Come on around, Kevin.
Last time he said that, he wasn't sure where he'd get his
Now, I promised them a short meeting, so I, I will do my part. Alright, let's see. Alright, so we have resolution, uh, oh-nine, one-five, two-five. It's the BZA and Ethics Commission pay increase.
Well, we don't want you to meet, Matt. You're not listening. Don't get too excited, yeah.
Alright, um. Gary, would, Town Manager Di, would you like me to handle that?
Sure. Sure, um, the, our attorney Ostrander prepared the, the resolution establishing the stipend paid to members of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Ethics. And it's real brief. If you want to read it quick, if not, we can
Well, for some reason, mine's not opening.
Took a minute for it to come up.
Yeah, whole folder is slow tonight.
Alright. This is a, a resolution zero-nine, one-five, dash, two-five. Whereas the New Windsor Board of Zoning Appeals and Ethics Commission members worked diligently on behalf of the residents of the town. And whereas the stipend paid to the, to these individuals board is minimal and has not been increased in many years. Whereas the mayor and council have determined that an increase in the stipend is justified and appropriate. Now, therefore, it be, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the town of New Windsor that a stipend paid to members of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Ethics shall be increased to fifty dollars per meeting attended. And it be, uh, and be it further resolved that this increase shall be effective immediately. Witness my signature and seal of the town of New Windsor this fifteenth day of September twenty twenty-five. Introduced fifteenth day, uh, of September twenty twenty-five. Alright. Look at that taken care of. And do we have a motion to accept this, uh, resolution zero-nine, dash, one-five, dash, twenty-five?
I'll make a resolution, I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept resolution oh-nine, dash, one-five, dash, two-five as written.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Say, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. Alright. Town Manager Di, are you gonna speak on the War Memorial Park?
No, I am.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Um, I didn't put anything in here because it was just an email back and forth between Wayne and I, but I had a, a resident come up to me because, uh, when they did, redid the stones over on the park, um, the plaques got it's not really stained, but it's like the, the water that was running from the grout, I think, has marred the plaques, I guess is the best way to put it. And so Wayne looked at it and, um, it, he thinks it's a combination of age and, um, we probably should think about replacing those. And Wayne pointed out also that he believes that the last veteran's name that's noted on there is nineteen ninety-one. So I'm sure that we have some people in town, um, since nineteen ninety-one who have served. So, um, I guess really what we need to do is probably talk about putting this in next year's budget, right? Probably, Gary, because we don't, we wouldn't have, I mean Dana's not here tonight. Just wanted to sort of get it on everybody's radar that we're gonna probably need to spend some more money over there if we wanna. I mean, it's, we've done all this other work and now the plaques all have, you know, you, you'll see it, it's pretty, you can see it pretty easily when you go by. It's like white lines going down two of the plaques. And then also the fact that we should, we need to, I'm not quite sure how we collect the information other than maybe a, a pu- public appeal to the residents to say, if you knows, know of somebody who should be, um, named in the park, please let us know and get the deeds of their service and things like that, the other pertinent information, so. I mean, we'll have to talk about actually budgeting for it, but I just wanted to sort of get a sense from everybody how they feel about that.
I mean, if nothing more for, um, I mean, to update it. I mean, uh, I would imagine new ones anyway, right?
Thirty years old, given the ninety-one timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, so, update, I mean, the condition is one thing, but we, we certainly want to include everybody that we can that, that lives in town that should be on there.
So I wonder, um, for, for future updates, because if we updated in two thousand and twenty-six and ten years from now, there's um, I wonder if when we go to purchase new plaques, we can find something that we would be able to add names to as opposed to having to replace the whole plaque again. So that's gonna take a concerted effort to
Right.
both get the names and to figure out.
Probably need another plaque to, to pick up from ninety-one forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both rooms left on the existing plaques, but probably not much from my recollection.
I can't remember. I think it was former mayor Roop sent me a document that had some history about the park over there, so. There's something in that about how they cut the names in the first place, but yeah, I agree with you. Hey, we need to make sure there's room for adding later on, so.
So you're just
Sort of, I mean, yeah, and we, it's gonna be pretty expensive and we haven't budgeted for it this year, so I don't, I don't think there's and, and we're also right in the middle of the other work over there right now anyways, so.
Yeah, that's like I said, I think that'll go into one of our capital projects on, on the general, on side.
So I, I guess to get a bigger picture on this, are we gonna have to do the mon- redo anything with the monuments or? Or really?
Maybe we could just put another one in, in the, in the middle or something. I don't know. Or on the, further around one of the sides or something.
How much do the plaques cost roughly? Does anybody have a rough idea?
If it's been since nineteen ninety-one, I guess we're not gonna have any idea.
Alright.
Could check, we could get an estimate from, I guess, Land, who does a lot of our engraving and stuff. Don't know if they do stuff that big, or, but, um, can we start with them and ask? Okay.
Alright. Any questions? Alright. Christmas tree purchased from Dream Big Union Bridge.
Yeah, that's me again. So Connor, were you able to fix the picture at all?
Yeah.
So, for those of you who may not be familiar with Dream Big Union Bridge, it's a not-for-profit organization in Union Bridge that, um, runs this little shop that's in debt, they're in Union Bridges downtown. And they do some events. They do a, a duck derby and they had a farmer's market this year, a couple of other things. And any events that make money, they put back into events in the community. So they have like a New Year's Eve thing and, um, but unfortunately, um, because, you know, it's a volunteer organization and for a number of reasons, a number of stressors on the organization, they've decided to dissolve. And they have this beautiful Christmas tree that they just bought last year. And they contacted, they wanted to give us first dibs on possibly purchasing the tree. So again, something we didn't budget for, but you know, we don't have Dana here, but I am gonna just tell you some information about it. It's eighteen feet tall. Um, like I said, it's only a year old, so we've still got the manual included. All the pieces plug into a central, um, hole, I guess. It's pre-lit and you plug in the branches as you go. All the lights are LED, and so the whole tree can plug into a regular outlet, doesn't need any extra electricity. The wires are all protected with sleeving. Um, the top piece, piece, it comes in, the, the pieces that hold the branches, I think, come into, are apart to three pieces with a six-foot piece at the top and then two triangular pieces, um, at the bottom, which is kind of hard to tell from this picture without means. They're also going to give us all the ornaments that they bought for it. And, um, it's for free. And the whole thing fits into totes and some bags, so, um. They bought it for seventy-five hundred. I asked Anne Marie to do some research and she couldn't find any tree with lights for less than thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was the average of five, five vendors or companies that sell commercial grade outside trees. And that's lights only, no ornaments. Average of thirteen thousand and two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For that same size.
For the same size. I mean, I, just my opinion, I think it's beautiful. I saw it in person last year. They want five thousand dollars for it. I don't know if they would entertain in any other offer. But, um, what I was gonna propose was that if the council is even possibly interested in purchasing the tree, um, that I would see if I could arrange to go over to, they keep it in the basement of the store in Union Bridge. Because the way that store is built, it's built into a hills of the back, the basement just opens up into the parking lot. And they said that we could come over with, I was thinking Alan, does that make sense to you? Go over with Alan and Brian Calusi, who used to be our dep- you know, our sheriff's deputy, um, would, would show it to us and show us what's involved in storing it. And so we give a sense of how much space it takes up. So if, we want to find some of that stuff out before, if we were interested in buying it, before we would even move forward with possibly buying. So, but I don't know if I could answer any other questions, but I could try if anybody has questions.
Do we, do we think our Public Works would be able to set it up?
It doesn't sound hard from
One we have in here is not quite that tall, but it sounds like it's, it's three sections, same, same, similar type style, I'm sure, but, um.
And for those of you who are fairly new to the council, what we've done for what, the past four or five years is buy a bald tree. So obviously nothing that big. And obviously you could buy a lot of bald trees for five thousand dollars, but we're, it's, you know, it's, I honestly, you know, last year the bald tree was kind of a little bit of a disappointment.
Yeah. This certainly, this certainly will fill the park out better.
What did you say, Jay?
It was not a bald tree last year.
Oh, just a disappointment in general.
No, it's because it's a, it's a large area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And even when we put a eight or nine or ten-foot tree in there, it, it doesn't fill the area. And we could never put enough lights on it to, to look like something like that.
Yeah.
And Brian also said that to keep it from moving in the wind, they just, um, tied some cinder blocks underneath it and it was fine. They said they had a couple of really windy nights and it didn't go anywhere, so. I'm sure we have some cinder blocks laying around someplace. Yeah, so.
If I could weigh in on it, I'm, um, I actually have been the one to search the tree, look for the tree. And, uh, I was looking for the biggest tree that we could get. And, you know, trees are pretty expensive. But this thing probably will last for at least twenty-five years, I would imagine, twenty, twenty-five years.
I mean, I know I have LED lights in my house that have been running for, like, that I put up, that have been running for ten, eleven, twelve years. They don't, they don't, it's not like the other, the old kind of Christmas tree lights. I mean, they cost more, but
Well
and they don't use a lot of electricity either when they're lit.
To Councilman Hoffman's point, when you ride by the, you know, the park, Fountain Park and you see the tree, it is kind of underwhelming, even though it's nice and it's no one's fault. It's just a, that park is just bigger than it, it, it seems. And when you have a ten-foot tree, I think they even put, we put it in a bucket and we tried to sit it up and I, I rode by and I said, that's not the same tree. My wife said, that's not the same tree. She said a little more forcefully than that, but but I think what it is is just, you, when you ride by there, that park is such a beautiful thing at Christmas time. Especially when we put all the lights around the town. I think, uh, this is just my two cents, that if you had a bigger tree, um, you know, I think it would add something to the park. And I think it would add something for the town, so. And this is coming from somebody who loves a fresh tree, so.
I do too.
I really love a fresh tree, so. Um, but I think it'll, I think it, I think it'll be a benefit for the town, but I'll leave that up to you all.
Anybody else? Questions, thoughts, comments?
I think it would look good on that corner, just my own comments.
Alright, so is there consensus that I will go get it looked at and see how Public Works feel about it and then bring it all back to you for I'll ask, and I'll also ask Dana where we would take the money from. Okay. Okay. We have enough money in there to do that?
Before we have budget in there, I don't know, we've used the dates so far. We haven't started putting year-to-date numbers in yet. Getting there.
I know it.
The, the other thing
Twenty fifteen, to answer your question, but I don't know what year-to-date is.
Alright, so that's where it would come out.
Is diameter of the tree a concern? Is it, do we have enough room that, I would think so.
We have plenty, plenty of room in the circle for
Yeah.
For the, the tree that size, yeah. Because that's where we put my beer tent.
Not as big as the beer tent, so. Okay, alright, so that, I'll follow up with everybody next meeting.
That one's out till Wednesday. He'll be back Wednesday.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Alright. Hunting on Bowersocks Farm. We, do we have a person that's gonna handle that?
I guess, um, this topic kind of came up when we did the, uh, Public Works tour. We toured Bowersocks Farm with, um, with Wayne and Alan. And we actually met with the farmer that's leasing the town-owned farm where the main spring is. And, uh, he mentioned that he has had quite a bit of, um, of crop damage from deer. About five acres, um, which is about four thousand dollars in seed costs, plus, you know, the labor, fertilizer, lost revenue. Um, and in years where, um, corn prices are low, you know, he's kind of scraping by just to, you know, kind of making little profit already. And when there's significant deer damage, um, that kind of just eats into it. And, um, he's not a hunter himself, but he asked if we would, um, maybe look into allowing some sort of hunting. Uh, I talked to Wayne a little bit about it that day and over email, um, and he had some good ideas regarding allowing, um, town employees meeting certain criteria, um, including obtaining, um, hunter liability insurance, um, which is something that they would have to obtain themselves, sign a waiver, I guess with the town, have a copy of their, um, hunting liability insurance on copy with, on file with the town. Um, I looked it up. I'm not a hunting, hunter myself, but I think it's like a minimal expense for them. Um, it looked like one hundred to two hundred dollars, I think, um, could buy hunter liability insurance that would cover the size of that, um, of that farm. Uh, I know it may have been brought up previously, but I don't know, um, to what extent the conversation happened. I know there was some liability concerns maybe in the past. I'm not sure if there were any, um, town employees, like I know there's at least two Public Works employees currently that would be interested in, in hunting on the land. I mean, it's nearby, it's a decent sized piece of land. And, um, and I know the, the farmer that leases the land from us would appreciate, uh, there being less deer on that land. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, concerns?
Kim, it's probably
Kim, it's probably you and I, and I talked to, Josh had contacted me a little bit, and I remember we had this conversation a couple of years ago about it. And um, you know, I know Wayne was an advocate for it at the time as well. And however, I I believe we did not do it because of some liability issues, and I think that Michelle weighed in. And um, so although I'm not opposed to hunting or anything like that, I would really need to hear from Michelle. I I don't recall, and I went back and looked at my notes, I could not find that conversation that we talked about, and so I don't know what the, what the hurdle was.
I mean, I don't either, but I I agree with you, I think it was, somebody said absolutely not cuz of the liability issues, no, I don't remember the. The option of the hunters getting their own insurance being brought up before, but yeah, I agree with Dave, I think I need to hear what her. So so Wayne couldn't be here tonight, is that why we have his, his notes? Yeah, so maybe we could, yeah, I don't know, we could even just send this to her to review so she could come prepared to discuss it at the next meet. I know. Is she reading? Michelle, yeah, yeah, I mean, I know hunting season.
She gave us an opinion on it, y- y- you know, and and. And we didn't do it, so. And and and, you know, maybe this hunter insurance could throw it the other way, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know about it.
Whole lot about it, I know in in my quick, you know, Google searches of hunter liability insurance, it. It seemed to indicate that it would like absolve landowners of liability, I mean, it was significant, I mean. For the minimal cost, it was like two million dollars of coverage. It covered.
I'm also just wondering who's gonna in in, like, make sure that's, that, that somebody that comes on their land to hunt has a license. Or or has the insurance, I mean.
Well, I think that the the plan to at least to start would be to only open it to town employees.
It would only be limited to town employees.
Keep a copy, I think the town should keep a copy of that.
More of the insurance and their license and and that kinda thing.
More or less an employee of the town, cuz technically we are. Would have the ability to, but then would have to still check these boxes in order to go. And we could even take it a step further and have some type of signup mechanism or scheduling mechanism, so we can ensure there's no more than. Two individuals or three individuals or whatever that number needs to be at a time out there.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's it's a lot of land, but it's not, you know, it's not a thousand acres.
I don't know what the optimal hunter per acreage is.
If you ask a hunter, it's him and it's that single hunter. It's a whole property, it's all the deer.
He wants to, he also is looking at it as a, you know, a land management activity. As it's serving some purposes there and in terms of keeping the crop damage there, minimizing the crop damage at least for for the farmer out there. But you also have the concerns of it being a water source.
I was gonna say, he mentions. God, M D. He mentioned in his, in his comments too here.
Things out there during hunting season as it is, just to keep an eye on things. And the adjoining neighbors are also uh, good stewards and communicate with both the farmer, Condon and. And um, and I mean, in terms of, you know, if any issues or they see anything going on out there.
We would certainly have to flesh out some type of credential system for DNR and even the neighbors, or give some type of heads up to everybody like, hey. This group is good, that kinda thing, but certainly a, in my opinion, a necessary thing to help. Mike, but also the town.
The number of people that wanna lease that land to farm it is probably a relatively small pool, I would assume based, I don't know how many people. Provided bids last time it was open, but I assume it's probably a fairly small pool. And if um, if the current leasing is, you know, losing money every year on it, he may not be interested in continuing that, and then. We would lose, you know, if we lose that, cuz he's also not just farming it, he's ma- maintaining the land for us also. Keeping kind of the um, the grass, the mowing uh, area taken care of.
Management of the, of a, of the hunting would is, was the issue, I think, too. In addition to liability, because you had folks that were. Allowed to hunt it and then it would bring. Other people on, which tends to happen when somebody, especially the hunting is successful. You know, folks hear about it, and it's just managing it, and I think we have residents around that util- utilize that. That area just for walking or just kinda, you know, kinda, well, just walking, taking a stroll through the. Through that farm, it's a, it's a very scenic place, so I could see people doing that, but I think we should list the. Wait to hear what Michelle has to say about it, is, you know.
Well, I can, I can just forward um, this and the email between Josh and and Wayne to uh, to Michelle and. Say, I know we talked about this a couple of years ago and. See where she is on it.
See what she thinks of Wayne's recommendation here, you know.
Really big trophy deer out there, maybe we could, you know, sell five hundred dollar a person drawing tickets.
Too many people.
But you only let, you know, everybody five hundred bucks, they get a shot at it, but you only pick three, you know, it'd be worth.
Based on the, what the farmer said, you know, he, there's times where he would see twenty-five deer at a time. Kinda walking through there and early in the morning, so I think that. That nobody's hunting in there, so they're hanging out there. We did see a lot, we did see the crop damage firsthand also.
Alright, everybody good with that, we'll pass it on to Attorney Ostrander, let her give us her opinion and we'll go from there, alright.
I've got a couple things before you close. Uh, this uh, the, the uh, fifth annual Frank Schaefer Memorial Five K Run Walk, we only have thirty-three days until the fifth. Uh, running of that event, uh, date is Saturday, October eighteenth, nine o'clock at Wakefield Valley Park. So sponsor request letters and forms were, have been sent out. Um, takes the, the run walk takes place on paved trails. Um, at Wakefield Valley Park, so you can either be a serious runner or a casual runner or walker. Uh, spread the word and consider signing up. Did send out an email to staff and elected officials asking about availability of volunteers. For volunteers in shirt size, so most of y'all got back to me on that. Um, musical on the main is Saturday, October fourth, from twelve to six. Um, getting and working on a list of volunteers for that as well. And our favorite topic, we're gonna bring back very briefly. Two eleven High Street Building bee removal is scheduled for tomorrow morning.
Oh, boy.
Bee extraction is happening.
Buy bees. Buy, buy bees.
We have uh, Director Myers lined up a lift and and come hecker high water, we're gonna be out there boarding it up, cuz. When they're done, we don't want them back. Haven't figured out exactly how we're gonna do that, we're gonna let the bee guy get done first. And then get up there with the lift and and close that up.
And it's, huh, it costs so much money?
Uh, thank you, uh, Wendy, it's Wendy Hill Apiary, and he's doing the extraction for free cuz he wants the bees and none. And then, just a quick note, I mentioned that the highway user revenue numbers estimated are up a lot. I don't know why, but I'm not asking questions. I mean, it's significant, it's more than double what it was.
Just do a quick. Just do a quick tutorial on what, on what that is and what we do with it.
Highway user revenue is money that we get each year from the state. It's based on several factors, mileage of road, high gasoline tax, or, you know. Um, registrations for vehicles, all that kinda thing, and each, each municipality gets a share of money called highway user revenue. It can only be used to pave roads, it can't be used really for anything, not even parking lots. Um, but to give you an example, if I'm trying to hear this, how much it went up, just in. We get these estimates from M dot every, every, usually twice a year. So in December tw- of twenty, this, December twenty-seventh of last year, for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, the number, the estimates were. A hundred thirty-nine thousand five oh one and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand one fifty-one respectively. September eighth, now you're looking at twenty-six and twenty-seven, three thirty-six, four ninety-four. And three forty-two, nine fifty-seven.
Good news.
And on that same note, our, our paving contractor, CP, has started today out at um.
They were on Tibbetts today.
Yeah, and. Good, didn't need any base and, and so they're working on that, they're gonna be moving into. Little section of Springdale, it is our section, our first tenth of a mile, um, before it becomes county and then work their way back through town, so. We will uh, put a bug in the ear not to go too far and we're gonna hopefully do some more roads next year for sure, based on that estimate.
Are we announcing to the, are we going to announce to the neighbors when they're gonna be doing sections, they're doing several the, the. Lanes, the alleyways in town, and a lot of folks have their garages and things on the back, and we wouldn't wanna get them stuck.
He's gonna start getting those loaders out tomorrow, yeah. And.
Upcoming council meetings, Wednesday, October first is our next council meeting, and then Monday, October twentieth is our next work session. Uh, to November, for just for that, the month of November, uh, council meeting is on November third, that is a Monday. And Wednesday, October nineteenth is the work session, so we're just gonna flip-flop for that month only. Alright, any other questions, any comments, announcements?
I just wanted to mention the, the breakfast. Yeah, so for again, some of our newer folks, we most years have had a, a breakfast on a Saturday in December. For the holidays and um, we, everybody, all the staff are are invited and everyone's invited to bring family that live with them. Spouses, et cetera. So last year, the Methodist Church um, did it for us, which was very inexpensive. I don't remember how much it was per person, but it was a good price, so I approached them and they said they would be willing to do it again. So we're looking at nine o'clock in the morning on either December sixth, which is Saturday, or December thirteenth. So I'm going to probably have Anne Marie send an email to everybody to let her know which. Or both, if both the dates work for you, just say both, if only one of them works for you, and we'll just try to pick the date that the most people, that you all would get invited to that to. Um, that the most people can go to, okay? That's okay with everybody, alright. Remember how we did it in the church basement last winter, did you come? I don't think you couldn't come.
So is the um, it's this church right here.
Yeah, so there underneath, um, when you go to that door on the side, you go down the stairs, there, that's their activity room, so. Okay, and then I'll, I'll give everybody, I'll ask Anne Marie to give everybody a deadline, I guess the church asked me to let them know as, as possible.
Alright. Thank you, Councilwoman Schultz. Alright, if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll hear motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Alright, I was wondering if we were gonna be here for a while.